Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Milton School Committee on July 21st, 2021. We are conducting this meeting pursuant to the executive order dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and allowing us to meet virtually. I want to welcome everyone to the meeting tonight. I hope that you're all doing well this evening. We have a full, full agenda tonight. And so the first order of business is to approve the agenda for the July 21st, 2021 meeting. Please look over the agenda for a few minutes and let me know if you have any changes or additions that you'd like to make. Anyone? No? Okay, so may I have a motion to approve the agenda of July 21st, 2021? So moved. Okay, this is a roll call vote. Dr. Lynn Kirkhead?
Yes.
Dr. Elizabeth Carroll?
Yes.
Member Beverly Ross Denny?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
And member Abahart, yes. Wonderful. We are going to start this meeting with a citizen speak. Before we begin the meeting with citizen speak, I want to take just a minute to review our policy. Policy, let me review right here, B E D H, Public Comment at School Committee Meetings. I want to review for everyone the ground rules for citizen speak. Citizen speak will be 15 minutes, and that's it. You may raise your hand in the Zoom if you'd like to speak at citizen speak. You will be promoted to speak. You will state your name, your address, and you have up to three minutes to share your comments or your suggestions. I would like to point out that at citizen speak, we act with grace and kindness towards each other and the community. Any remarks that are considered abusive or unkind or directed at any member of the community or the administration will be considered out of order. And your privilege to speak at citizen speak may be revoked. I welcome your thoughts, your suggestions, your constructive criticism. I like a challenged network in this community, but I like a respectful classroom. So with that being said, if there's anyone for citizen speak, Sean from Milton-Nachos TV will promote you. Remember to raise your hand, state your name, your address, and then please address the committee. You have up to three minutes for your comments.
Yeah, Abahart, if I could just make a suggestion, if people could put themselves on mute until they speak, that way it avoids the feedback.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Jett. I forgot to put that in my notes. Okay. Do we have our first speaker?
We do. Regine.
Ah, welcome, Regine, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much. I think, Margaret, this is my first meeting with you as the chair, so it's just lovely to see your pleasant face and setting the tone.
Lovely to have you here.
So my name is Dr. Regine Michel-Jean Charles. I live at 70 Sumner Street. I am the parent of four children in the Milton Public Schools and a professor at Northeastern University where I teach classes about the intersection of race, gender, and justice. Tonight, I come to you on behalf of the Milton Anti-Racist Coalition, Mark, which is a coalition of over 500 active members across town made up of parents, community members, educators, administrators, and students. About a year ago, the Milton Anti-Racist Coalition came together to stand in solidarity around a new shared vision and plan of action for transforming Milton Public Schools into an exemplar educational system that is more excellent, more equitable, more just, and more inclusive for every child, every single day. Tonight, we watch as the school committee and the district leadership fulfills its stated commitment to conduct a robust, external, equity-centered, district-wide review of MPS policies and practices. So we're speaking tonight to commend the Milton School Committee for prioritizing, investing in, and supporting a rigorous external systematic review of the district with an equity lens, and to also commend Superintendent Jett and his leadership team for carrying out this review with resolve and purpose. This is certainly new territory for Milton, and our efforts should be lauded by all. And we should also remember that every single child in our town, regardless of race, gender, class, ability, ethnicity, religion, or any other marker of identity or sexuality, will benefit from this. The importance of this step for our journey together as a community cannot be understated. The Mark platform called for an equity-centered review so that we could have a robust baseline understanding of where we actually are. It's essential for us to have this information so that we can lay out a roadmap for how we can work together to ensure that every child receives truly excellent, equitable, and anti-racist education that they need in order to become leaders in our 21st century global society. We also speak in a spirit of solidarity and unity because after tonight, when the results of the quality review are released, the real work will actually begin. That means that we want to make clear that we, as a coalition and an organization, are here to support the district's ongoing commitment to pursuing excellence with equity at its core. We also urge everyone in our community to see that we each have a role to play and to get involved in being part of this process. We are stronger together. In recent weeks, Mark has put out a call to action urging Milton community members committed to realizing this vision to stand together in solidarity as we collectively engage in the next phases of this work. You can see, for example, on the Mark Facebook page, there's more information about how to reach out to us. There will certainly, without question, we know, be challenging times ahead as our community confronts these truths, these difficult truths and these complex problems. But we really, really, really believe that we can and will make progress by working together to interpret and understand the results from diverse and inclusive perspectives, inclusive, I'll say it again, and by actively seeking out and working to identify our own role in the shared work of dismantling institutional racism and discrimination and every form of marginalization in our practices and policies and the interpersonal racism that finds its way into our day-to-day routines and experiences. And so I just want to close with a reminder to the community that we should unify, and this should bind us together because this work will benefit everyone, every child, and every community member in our town. Because racism and discrimination, whether it's sexism, or homophobia, or Islamophobia, or anti-religious sentiments, every form of discrimination harms everyone in our community. And it places an undue burden on our BIPOC immigrant LGBTQ+ minoritized and differently-abled childrens and families. We all have a role to play, and our schools and our community will be stronger and more excellent as we continue to come together in this work in the spirit of justice, unity, solidarity, and excellence. Thank you so much for giving me the time to speak.
Thank you, Dr. Charles. Next, next speaker?
Susan Koch Weiser.
Welcome, welcome, Ms. Weiser.
Thank you. So my name is Susan Koch-Baser. I live at 115 Warren Ave. I'm the mom of two boys in the middle school and in the high school. And I'm also on the faculty at Tufts University School of Medicine where I'm the Associate Director of our Masters in Public Health Program. I'm actually here today because Deborah Milbauer wanted to speak. She's another public health professional in our community. And I am going to read a statement that she wrote, but that I fully endorse. And I can also add that other public health professionals, including Lindsay Rosenfeld and Beth Molnar, who also are members of the Milton community, endorse it as well. So, as a mom, I support the survey that was part of the equity audit 100%. The opposition towards the survey is that comes from a misunderstanding of the purpose and scope of its objective. I applaud all of the equity work of the school staff, teachers, and school committee. It benefits all of us, children and adults alike, even those opposed to the survey. I'm so grateful to be raising my kids in a school district that cares about equity and inclusion. If your child felt alone or isolated, you would want your child supported, regardless of the reason. Asking a child what they might be experiencing is nurturing and compassionate thing to do. Not asking what they are experiencing, whether you think they should be experiencing it or not, is harmful to a child's mental health. Asking will not put ideas in their head. For some youth, those ideas are already there, whether they have the words for them or not. You might not want your child to be or feel a certain way, but it is not up to you, regardless of the child's age. In fact, the earlier you support a child, the better their long-term mental health. As a public health professional, I understand the critical role that survey data serves. We cannot run schools without insights from real data. Engaging an external third party to conduct and analyze surveys is exactly what to do when collecting sensitive information. Having a survey done by people the students and parents know can impede data collection and be harmful to the quality of the data. It is best practice for an outside organization to do the research, not my personal opinion. I myself have conducted surveys in my own work, and I would never conduct them with people I knew. The money we have spent for this audit and for the survey in particular was well-spent, and it's a brilliant return on investment. The concept of investing a little money in the short term for a big payoff in the long term. The investment in understanding our youth and their needs today can head off bad outcomes and the expenses that come with them, especially as it relates to academic achievement. Research shows that children do worse in schools if they feel misunderstood or isolated. The discomfort we feel with discussing the topics in the survey shows how much work lays ahead for us to support and educate everyone in our community, not just our students. So in conclusion, we support the survey as mothers and as public health professionals. We deeply appreciate how hard you have all worked, the hours and hours of time above and beyond spent to make the schools a safe and equitable place. You have lots of supporters, and I am proud to send my kids to the Milton Public Schools. Keep up the amazing work. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for coming. We have about five minutes left for citizen speak, so probably two more speakers. Next speaker, please.
Mark A. Johnson.
Welcome, Mr. Johnson.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Oh, terrific. Thank you. I'll be short. I want to, I want to, I think, really follow the comments of the past two speakers, and firstly, like, Dr. Jean Charles, just say thank you. Thank you to the district as led by Superintendent Jett for not resisting, but really persisting through a tough time and what I know was a lot of, you know, pushback or resistance to this idea. So thank you for taking up this work, this survey, kind of conducted by a third party, as the last speaker said, which is a real best practice. And like the last speaker, and incidentally, I'm Mark Johnson at 204 Church Street in Milton. My son is a student at Tucker. Sorry about that. But let me, I guess, close by saying, yeah, it feels good to live someplace where the district cares about equity and inclusion. And we don't know what the outcome of this survey will be, but I take heart and have faith in a leadership and a system that wants to discover what it can do to be better for all our kids. And so thank you. Have a great evening, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And one more speaker, Sean, please.
Next speaker would be Joy Jarmais.
Welcome. Hello. Hello? Is anybody there?
Well, Joy Jarmais looks like she jumped out, so the other person would be Biz Burko.
Yep. Welcome. Hello.
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
Yeah, this is Rob Burke. How you doing, folks? Good to see all your smiles on your face tonight. Come on, folks, smile for the audience. It's really hard for you to do that, I know. It's a killer. Hey, so anyways, three minutes of citizen speak should never, we should have a lot more of this chat, and unfortunately, for three minutes, it's sort of ridiculous to try to go through your budget of over 50-something million dollars for the town of Milton for an equity study that no one can explain, put a definition on, and all you people, seriously, you're all in on it. This is hilarious. And I got to tell you, we're going to start, and we're going to have a nice conversation, and we're going to invite each and every one of you. And you can't hide behind Zoom when you're going to take this school policy and upend the town of Milton based on what? What was the reason we based this on? I know you can't answer it, and I'm looking at all you people. Keep your eyes on me, ma'am. Thank you. I appreciate it. Don't be rude to me again. I know. I've seen her before in town meeting, the one with the lady with the striped shirt on. So anyway...
Mr. Burke, you will keep your comments to the chair.
I know.
Be courteous, or you'll be asked to leave the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, have an, yes, I'll do that for me. Okay, that's great. Listen, this is good. This is good. And we're going to wrap up because this is a waste of time. Three minutes to talk about something to turn the town upside down? This is a bunch of noise. This is nonsense. And I wish, listen, can't wait to get at it with you folks. You can't hide behind Zoom all the time. Taxpayers want to talk to you, and you have to explain this to them. And we'll see you on all sorts of different avenues, whether it's court, on TV, or whatever. And please, bring Ms. Jared back into the scene, please. We need to talk about that video.
Mr. Burke, we are not speaking about people directly, as I said in the initial comments.
She's a teacher. Hey, Ms. Everhart, she's a teacher.
You may not direct your comments towards a teacher or any employee.
Why not? Why not? What's the rule about that?
That is the policy of the district.
It's a wrong call.
We have a few more minutes, 31 seconds, to finish your comments, please, and we are going to move on.
I'm going to take my 31 seconds and not say a word for a protest. This is nonsense. You should be ashamed of yourself, all you people. It's funny. People are on to you guys, on to all of you. You can hide, you can lie, you can steal, but it's going to stop, and we'll make sure that happens. And if you don't like it, as they say, tough noogies, okay? We're coming after you, and you have a wonderful day. I know you can't smile because all you people have a bad, toxic belief system, and we're going to help you get rid of it. And I'll say a prayer for your conversion with Mother Teresa, and I'll bring some holy water for all you Marxists. Have a wonderful day. Smile, everybody. Come on. You can do it. Do it.
Goodbye, Mr. Burke, and thank you so much for coming.
Thank you very much for nothing. Bye, bye, bye.
Bye now.
Bye now. That was great. Thank you very much.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you so much for attending tonight. Thank you to the citizens who spoke at citizen speak and were able to adhere to our policy and share their comments with the committee. I really appreciate that. All right, so now we are on to the superintendent's report. I am very excited to introduce Superintendent Jett, who is going to introduce Cambridge Education and discuss the beginning discussions of the equity audit. So Superintendent Jett, without further ado, you are welcome.
So thank you, Chair Abahart, and thank you for those, all of the speakers, for the opinions and their support and their comments this evening. One of the things that I wanted to say, as a superintendent of Milton Public Schools, I stand 100% behind the equity audit. It is our job, my job as a superintendent, to be the superintendent for every single one of the 4,400-plus students that will walk through the threshold of the doors. Equity, for me, is non-negotiable, and I hope and I look forward to having these forums with families to give them the update about the work that we are about to embark upon. So I do want it to state that. Without further ado, I would like to introduce to you Mr. Chris Finn. He is going to be one of the lead presenters this evening, and I'm going to ask him to do a quick introduction of the members that he have of his team with him, and then we will start that presentation, and then I will have a few follow-up comments at the end of the presentation as well. So thank you, Mr. Finn.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Jett, and good evening to the board. Good evening, everyone. I am going to share my screen, and within the presentation, I will formally introduce some of my team members who are on this evening. Thank you, Ms. Everhart, for facilitating this evening. And I'm going to begin by sharing. So first, can everyone see my screen? Okay.
Yes.
And excellent. And I'm going to begin this part of the slideshow. Okay, so once again, good evening. My name is Chris Finn, representing Cambridge Education this evening and sharing some of the main findings of the quality review that we engaged in with an equity lens. Again, I want to share that my title is Senior Education Specialist from Cambridge Education, and I'm joined by some of my teammates who helped work on this process and this equity audit with me, which is Mindy Paolo, Keith Lazama, and Jeff Tegnell. They are also present here. They are the Chief Empowerment Officers and Consultants from LNP Educational Services. They were great partners in this work in helping to disaggregate the data and work together in coming up with our findings and our impact, which was based on our interviews, the data we collected, and the rubric that we used for this process. I am going to be the formal presenter for the lion's share of the presentation, and then as it pertains to questions, they're going to support me or support us with answering some questions. So I'm going to ask that you all be mindful of maybe making note of your questions as we move through the presentation, so there will be a formal space towards the end for you to ask. Okay? All right. So let me first share the objectives for tonight. I'm going to share a little bit of the background of, you know, the process. We're going to outline the purpose and the process of the quality review with an equity lens. We're going to discuss the factors that support equity and excellence in the district. We're going to discuss the factors that limit access and opportunities for some in the district. We're going to share some recommendations of high-leverage areas for improvement. We're going to share some next steps, and then we're going to answer any questions. Let me also just alert everyone, I may say this multiple times tonight, but you guys will be receiving the formal, very detailed report soon. So this is an opportunity to share some of the high-leverage areas. It's like a snapshot from the report, but we attempted to give some of the most powerful factors, if you will, in this session, and towards the end of this month, you should be receiving the formal, full report, which is really lengthy, includes a great deal of data and charts and narrative around what we're going to be sharing some of this evening. So a little bit about Cambridge and LNP. Cambridge Education is a leading provider of education services. Since 2002, we've led projects in 38 states, more than 570 districts, and more than 6,500 schools. LNP Educational Services helps to build the capacity and the competence of educators to teach, lead, and sustain equitable and culturally responsive classrooms and institutions. We at both Cambridge and LNP are all K-12 educators and/or administrators. We have a great extensive review experience, and we focus on learning improvement, learning and improved outcomes for students. We partner with our clients to engage all stakeholders in the process. So you'll note that the focus groups were varied across the district, including parents and students and community stakeholders, teachers, school leaders, and the district-level employees as well. We have a proven process for creating, managing, and evaluating improvement efforts, and we're experienced providers for professional learning towards equity. So outside of these reviews, we also engage in professional learning to support the growth of districts around equity. So the school review experience for Cambridge in particular, we've done school quality reviews in 20 states, over 100 districts, and over 3,000 schools. This is specific to the school quality review. And this is a little bit of how the process works. So we start by planning and project management. So we worked very closely with the district leadership. I mean, Dr. Spalding is here and James Jeter here. They were with us literally every step of this way, agreeing on the instruments and the tools that we would use and, you know, supporting us with agreeing on how the project would roll out and be managed throughout. Then the district did some self-evaluation, and they discussed some of the areas where they felt they had strengths and challenges. We went through a great deal of document collection. A really special shout-out to Ms. Vee Wu, who has been dynamic in this process in supporting us with data and looking at policies. We then engaged in a great deal of stakeholder surveys, focus groups, and interviews. Some of the community stakeholders mentioned that early on, but the goal was to collect the stakeholder perception data, speak to individuals literally about their experiences in the district, and use that to support some of the findings in the project. We then visited classrooms remotely. We observed school classrooms. We observed instruction. We observed teacher meetings, and we had meetings with district, excuse me, with school leaders as well and their leadership team. And then we worked together to analyze root causes. We came up with the report as based on the information that was collected, and you will be receiving that formal report, as I mentioned, probably towards the end of this month. So this is just a glimpse of the process. Now, I think it's important to note the difference here between equality and equity, and I don't mean to suggest that people are not already aware of this, but I just want to make it extremely clear in this evening is that equality means offering everyone the same thing, and it makes assumptions that everyone has the same opportunities and experience, speaks the same way, learns the same way, and has had access to the same resources. Equity, though, gives each student what they need to be successful in school and beyond, and it is culturally responsive to diverse backgrounds, especially those who have been socially or socioeconomically, linguistically, and culturally marginalized. So when speaking about equity, it's just important to note that difference between giving everyone the exact same thing and giving each individual what they need to be successful to succeed. Why do we even care about equity? Okay, so because of the No Child Left Behind law that was in 2002, prior to that, most education agencies across the country just collected the aggregate data, so they looked at students on a whole, right? Just, these are our students. These are how our students are doing. But after No Child Left Behind, states were now required to report on the academic achievement and educational attainment across subgroups. So what that did was, you know, the government defined these subgroups as economically disadvantaged students, students from major racial or ethnic groups, students with medical or learning disabilities, and students with limited English proficiency, often referred to as our L students. So it required schools to now look at the subgroups within their population to not just give the kind of overall broad glimpse of how a specific school or district were doing, but to dig a little deeper and hone in on how subgroups are performing within this bigger aggregate data. Why do we collect data on subgroups? Schools and districts are required to collect data on student subgroups for the purpose of exposing underlying trends and issues such as achievement gaps, opportunity gaps, learning gaps, and other inequities in the public education system. District leaders and teachers have more detailed information about the performance and learning needs of specific groups of students, which allows them to design more appropriate or effective educational experiences and academic support. It allows us to dig deeper and really support students on an individualized basis to help them get what they need to be successful in school. This is just a glimpse of how, you know, disaggregated data on the left shows, you know, the district doing well at, you know, by 67%, if you will. The chart on the right, or the graph on the right, actually speaks to those students who use a fee waiver to be part of this programming, and you see the number is a little smaller, or 27% smaller, if you will, not a little number. But what that's sharing is that although, from, you know, maybe the helicopter view, a specific district looks like it's performing well, but when we're on the ground and looking at each individual student, you can see that there are some gaps in students who are performing or underperforming in specific areas. So some things that we know about equity is test scores alone don't tell the full story about a school, right? Low test scores can indicate more about a student's lack of opportunity than about how effective a school is often. It is possible to lose struggling students within the averages. So schools with high ratings on standardized tests, they may have student groups that are underperforming, but the numbers are small enough so that it doesn't affect the overall performance. So, you know, again, the district may be performing well from that helicopter view, but when you dig a little deeper, you find that some students might be being lost in the cracks, if you will. Schools that are successfully closing gaps are doing a good job for all students. Strategies that have been shown to help disadvantaged students succeed are good for all students. These include targeted instruction that meets each student where they are and and intervenes when they struggle, improving engagement, and emphasis on advanced coursework and college preparation and creating a culture of high expectation. These are all things that can support all students as well. And equity extends beyond the school building. Parents and community advocacy organizations can be key players in improving the overall school climate and the outcomes for all students. And we were, we did have the opportunity to meet with several school groups and community organizations during the focus groups. So their voices voices were part of this data collection as well. What are we looking for when we engage in the school quality review with the equity lens? So if you notice, there are four larger green circles around the outside, and those are our four domains. The first is student learning and development outcomes, where we're looking at actual academic data. We're looking at how students are performing in school. Then we look at curriculum, instruction, and assessment. Is the curriculum culturally responsive? Is it designed to support the students that it's teaching? How is instruction delivered? And how are students assessed across the district? We also look closely at leadership management and accountability. We we've had very deep conversations with district leaders, district level employees, and we talked about their level of leadership management and accountability. And also family and community engagement, which is really a powerful piece to this. We spoke to many families, many parents. We added focus groups because we had the interest from parents who wanted to join and share their their ideas and their thoughts about the district. And I'll note that, you know, for the room here, the parents in the district were really forthcoming when they shared and really engaged in the process. I mean, I, you know, we received some feedback. They were thankful to have a voice, thankful to share, and thankful to be included in this process. The quality review with an equity lens process is designed to enable the leadership and staff at all levels in the district to get a clear understanding of the quality of education that's being provided in relation to clearly articulated equity standards that define a quality school. That's a really big statement there. But in essence, it gives the district an opportunity, as many of the community stakeholders shared, to have an outside lens looking at the district and share with them some feedback as to how they can improve. It also helps to guide a process of self-reflection and directed practice, develop a shared understanding within the school community of the areas that promote equity and the priorities for improving student learning, and identifies needs with reference to a clear rubric that was used as a structured process. It enables the district to look for common patterns and professional practice across schools so they can better support student improvement or better support student outcomes for all. So the process is designed to do these things. And here's a little background about the actual process. So from January through May, we engaged in this very deep data collection piece, where we engaged in 22 interviews with district and school leaders. We had 15 focus groups that, you know, included sometimes up to 10, 12, 15 people in the focus group. 100-plus data sheets and documents were examined to look at curriculum and assessments and attendance and discipline and all the things that go into running school. We actually performed or engaged in six virtual school visits. We visited every school in the district. I think it's appropriate at this moment really to shout out your school leaders, too. It was not easy for some of them to do this virtually, and they, too, were really thoughtful in the process. I mean, as much as putting a laptop on a cart and walking around the whole building with it while they communicated with us on another laptop, they really taught us in a lot of ways how to do these virtual visits smoothly. Oftentimes, there would be a room with three laptops set up so that we could both look at the teacher instructing. We could see some students and observe learning, and then they were communicating with us as well. And then 3,000-plus surveys were sent out. We had a 12% response from parents, a 25% response from staff, and students in grades six to 12, which gave us a 45% response rate. So just so everyone is really clear, this was a really deep dive into the school, into the data, into the actual learning environment that your students are working in every day. And the district leaders and teachers and staff and school principals were really supportive during this process. This piece I always want to point out because I want people to recognize, you know, I'm a former school principal myself, and I, too, went through the school quality review. And I'm going to just be frank for a moment and share that, you know, at the time, I had some teachers who maybe were not in love with Chris Finn, right? Either the way that I was trying to push them or raise the level of expectation in my school. And my apprehension early on as a principal, this is about 15 years ago, was that, you know, an upset or disgruntled teacher would go see the quality review person and air all of their grievances, and it would sway the report, right? But when I learned about how to facilitate a quality review, and then I was trained to become a lead reviewer in quality reviews, and then I did them all across the country, I learned this piece which is crucial, and I always drive this home for principals, so I want to drive it home for you all today, is in order to find impact, we have to triangulate this data. And the data is collected in this way so that on one side of the triangle is the actual quantitative data. That's the real state score. That's the attendance rate. That's the discipline rate, right? Those are the raw numbers that exist on the paper. To the right, upper right, are the actual stakeholders' views. Those are people who are sharing with us their experience in the district. They're giving us their experience as parents, as school leaders, as teachers, even the students' views are brought into this piece. And then there's actually the direct observation is when we had the opportunity to visit schools ourselves virtually and see these things happen on the ground. So we can only come to to define our impact after we've examined the whole triangle, if you will. So there isn't one side of this triangle that outweighs the other. So to all of my people out there trying to grasp the the themes of this, you know, no one voice will outshine anything else in the district, or no one part of this triangle will outshine the other, if you will. So I I always want to present that to let you know that this, you know, if four people line up and say the district is the greatest of all time, it it will not immediately make that happen. We have to find that through the data and through the direct observation as well. And we're going to present some high leverage factors that support and limit district effectiveness. And remember, you're going to get a more granular and detailed report by the end of July. I said I'll probably say that 10 more times. I think that's probably the third time I've said it. Okay, so here we go. I'm going to first share some of the factors that support district effectiveness. The first is here, is that Milton Public School is a high-performing district with graduation rates and test sorts, test scores that exceed the state average. Teachers have high expectations and provide rigorous instruction. Nearly 90% of students attend two- or four-year colleges after graduating from high school. So you'll note that the dotted line speaks to the aggregate data. That's all students, right? And then the colored lines speak to the subgroups, if you will, to Asian students, Black students, Hispanic students, white, and multiracial students. So high-performing district even before we engaged in this review. So kudos to school leaders for getting the scores to exceed the state average. Another factor that supports is that the district has high-quality experienced teachers and administrators in every school. Nearly 90% of teachers report that their school is a nurturing place to work. This is literally from Teacher's Response Survey, and as you can see, 87% of teachers either strongly agree or agreed that their school is a nurturing environment in which to work. The 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 survey data, as one of our community stakeholders shared, is really an important piece to this because when they do it individually, people really have the opportunity to be frank and honest, and you'll often get some really honest responses. So it's great to see that teachers feel connected and their their environments in their school they feel are nurturing. Another factor that supports district equity and excellent, district and school strategic plans have goals associated with equity, diversity, and inclusion. The district has undertaken many recent initiatives to build equity in the schools, such as introducing a more culturally responsive curriculum and resources, implementing programs to support social and emotional learning for students, and training on restorative practices. So as we engaged in interviews, stakeholder reviews, and actually a review of the district's strategic plan, it was clear that they were already moving in the the realm of pushing towards more equity, diversity, and inclusion. This is a chart that speaks to the calculus project, which you guys have partnered with in the district, which helps support students moving from middle school to high school with engaging in higher-level math classes so that they can reach the level of calculus by high school and graduate having taken really high-level AP and math classes. So in engaging in the district plan and looking at the strategic plan, it was clear that they were already starting to move in this direction. This wasn't a brand-new initiative. And frankly, I would share that even this equity review is another move in that direction. Okay. Another factor is most parents and students feel respected by adults at the school and district level. Parents and caregivers are fully engaged, highly involved, and supportive of the schools and their children's learning. Families feel welcome, and teachers and administrators support two-way communication to keep parents informed on their children's progress and to understand their concerns. So you note, this is information from a family survey response, where 88% of the families that responded agreed that the principal at my children's school is responsive to my concerns. Almost 80% agreed that the principal and my children's school create opportunities for parents to be equal partners in achieving school goals. And again, just to unpack this one, in speaking to parents, it was really powerful in hearing their, you know, very granular level stories about working with school principals and how this principal came to speak to me when I was in the parking lot. And after school, this principal was so thoughtful to come and share X, Y, Z. So you're getting the broad stroke here, but in the focus groups, we were, you know, blessed, I guess, with hearing some of these real-life stories about how parents felt connected to the school leaders, and they felt heard, and they felt that there were opportunities being provided for them to partner with the school. So we wanted to share some of those high-leveraged factors. Oh, excuse me, here's another one, in that the district has built partnerships with many community organizations to support the academic and social and emotional needs of students and their families. Here is a list of several of the partnerships that have been made by the district. And to, you know, again, many of these people were included in the focus groups. There were actual focus groups for some, literally some of the district partnerships here. So their voices were also included in this process. Okay. Now we're going to move into sharing some factors that limit district effectiveness, and we're going to share some recommendations along the way. Okay, so here we go. The first of which is some disproportionality. The numbers of African-American, Black, and Latinx or Hispanic students identified for special education is disproportional to their population numbers. So what you'll note here is there's an expected number of students that are deemed to, like, tentatively be tested or recommended for special education, and then there's the actual number, right? So if you note, the Asian students, the suggested number is higher than the actual number, and the same is for white students. For multiracial students, it's almost neck and neck. But for Black students, making up 13.1% of what's expected, and then for them to be recognized at a 21.8% is disproportional, as it is with the Hispanic students in the district as well. So there's disproportionality in students being identified for special education. Another area of disproportionality speaks to students with disabilities and students who are economically disadvantaged received in-school suspensions at almost four times and five times the rate of white students. African-American or Black students receive out-of-school suspensions over four times the rate of white students. Of students with disabilities, African-American, Black students have over three times the rate of disciplinary removal than white students. And I know you're just getting a glimpse of these slides, but if you look at the bottom number, there are 3,096 white students, and 21 of them receive some type of school discipline. If you look at the Black students, there are 633 students, and 26 of them receive disciplinary action. So that number is a great disproportionality. You know, they they make up much less of the population, but literally have more disciplinary actions against them than white students. And you can note that across the board here, specifically with Black male students, and specifically with Black male students in special ed or students with disabilities. Another area of disproportionality, there are fewer students of color in AP classes and fewer economically disadvantaged students in the French immersion program. So if we look to that left chart, we see grade-one participation in French immersion program by income level. 94% of the students in that French immersion program are not from low-income families, if you will, not economically disadvantaged, and only 6% come from that population. If you look over here at the AP classes, you'll note that although Black students are making up 18% of the population, they only make up 11% of the AP classes. And you see that's disproportionate here amongst the other numbers. And frankly, for white students, they make up only 65% of the population, but make up 73% of the AP classes. So these are three areas of disproportionality that were discovered throughout this process. So one of our recommendations, in a very frank way, is work to disrupt this level of disproportionality. And some of the things we can do to help make this happen. We want to engage stakeholders to understand the root causes of disproportionality. Why are these things happening in the district? How can we avoid them? We want to be strategic and intentional about professional development. And that means when we're looking at restorative practices for discipline, when we're looking at classroom management practices, we want to be strategic so that we're being mindful that we don't disproportionately send students of color out of class or suspend them based on maybe potentially some of the same actions that other students are having in the classroom. We want to be, we want to disaggregate the data in each school to help really fine-tune this and look at this in a deep, deep way. And then we want to center deepen and embed universal divine design for learning, which is about planning backwards, you know, looking at our end goal, maybe making a blueprint for how we want to increase or decrease the suspensions for Black males in special ed by X percent. And then we work backwards from there to determine how to do that in the district. And we also want to create the requisite guardrails and gatekeeping mechanisms, which means we want to ensure that the policies and practices in each school are equitable, and it doesn't allow our own maybe implicit biases or a lack of training or a lack of understanding about how to support a subgroup, keep us from, you know, over-suspending students of color or having the high expectations for all students so that we all have the opportunity to reach and attend the AP classes in the school. So these are just some recommendations. As I mentioned, this is an area we went into really deeply in the report, and you're going to be able to read suggestions and opportunities for for more strategies to engage in this in the formal report. Another area that limits district equity is the curriculum and instruction. The curriculum is being updated, and attention has been paid to increasing the cultural relevance in some subject areas. It is evident, however, that not all students are taking opportunities to engage in the highest-level classes in the high school. And French immersion program is disproportionately white in most schools as well. So what we talk about here are, we're asked teachers actually across the district, do you feel the district has prepared you to utilize culturally responsive practices? And only 26% or 26.4% of teachers in the district who responded to the survey said yes. There are 36% that said no, and there are 37.6% that said somewhat. So frankly, in the last slide I shared that we need to hyper-focus on professional development so that students, excuse me, so that the instructors across the district can be prepared to be culturally responsive with their instruction. And here is evidence that the lion's share of the teacher population feels they have not yet been appropriately prepared to address students and be culturally responsive. feels they have not yet been appropriately prepared to address students and be culturally responsive. So that's an area that needs to be focused on moving forward. Here are some recommendations. Develop a comprehensive professional development plan. For the district, it's a long-term geared toward improving the learning of all students and skills of teacher, teachers. It has to be data-driven, research-based, with systematic sessions, follow-up, monitoring, and evaluation to ensure improved skills for teachers and better outcomes for students. Some teachers really did speak about having intended uh TDs around implicit bias or being more culturally thoughtful, but it it didn't drive at home enough to greatly impact their instruction across the district. In addition to formal professional development, we want to develop structures for job-embedded professional learning that incorporate curriculum leaders, building leaders, and teacher leaders as capacity builders so they can help drive this work within their own school. This includes supervising and supporting principals and instructional leaders who can advance the mission in the district. Another one is to develop a plan to make French immersion program more inclusive. Provide support to French immersion teachers to enable accessible classrooms that you that utilize a variety of instructional formats to better address the learning needs of students with a variety of backgrounds, learning modalities, and abilities, and allow the setting up of special educator and student support teams for French immersion teachers. Um, this is an area where we did observe many French immersion classrooms and in in a few situations, there were a hundred percent white students in the room. And frankly, the French immersion program, in our discussions with people around the district, we found it really is like a beacon for the district. Like people have talked about literally moving to the district for the French immersion program. So it's a powerful facet to the district, but the goal is to make it more equitable moving forward. Or equitable access to it as well. Uh, continue the program review of social studies curriculum under the leadership of the social studies coordinator and the MHS social studies chair, under which grade-level social studies curriculum would be written based on the two thousand eighteen history, social science framework standards, and continue to revise the curriculum with an equity lens. We want to continue to look at all of the curriculum with an equity lens. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committees should meet to design a plan and protocols for assessing curriculum and instruction with an equity lens. And frankly, just to touch back on the French immersion piece for one minute, you know, parents have shared with us in many focus groups that it's open in the first grade and that there's a, you know, there's an opportunity for us to join. So it might immediately look like, well, parents didn't choose to join when they had the opportunity. But what I'm sharing, though, is that, you know, you try to imagine the Black student walking down the hallway and looking at the French immersion class and seeing all white students. They may innately feel like, I don't belong in that class, right? Like that class is not for me because I don't see anyone or anything in that room that looks like me. So one thing kind of lends itself to another and the students may lose interest or not feel that they have a place in the classroom based on the fact that there's so little diversity of it in some classrooms. Okay. Another factor that sometimes limits the equity of the district is the accountability and monitoring are lacking in some areas. And the monitoring of learning and teaching, as well as the regular evaluation and feedback are inconsistent. And this speaks to the evaluation of principals across the district. It speaks to the evaluation of teachers in specific schools. Um, the district leadership has to be very mindful about accountability and monitoring what's going on in each school and really closely evaluating school leaders and the instructors within the school buildings to support the equity framework and the increased rigorous instruction for all students. Some recommendations here. Use student data to inform decisions at all levels. The district should develop and implement the district-wide protocol for using data in te- in teacher team meetings to better support the individualized instruction plan for students. We know that data should inform instruction and what we found is that the levels of data analysis and then the use of that data to drive future instruction is varied at levels. There are some teachers in schools that do it well. There are others that are still in the early stages of that. So we need a district-level support and protocol to ensure that that's happening at a high level in all schools. Devise a protocol for identifying, monitoring, and evaluating initiatives. Sometimes having too many priorities leads to a lack of clarity on what needs to be accomplished and when. So rather than try to do five hundred things in a mediocre fashion, let's try to do four things like really well and intentionally and keep that going for a long time. You know, it's important not to switch initiatives every year. Also, to ensure accountability, to support both growth and impact of school leadership, it's critical that the superintendent collaborates with principals each year to identify priority indicators and elements around which to focus the principal evaluation. That process can grow with the voice of the principals in it. You know, being that you have the six schools, everyone's voice can be part of that process. Well, so another recommendation is to involve school leaders in the budgeting process. Reform the budgeting process with the town so that it's based on an objective student characteristics and data, such as economic status, the ELL students, English language learners, students with disabilities, grade enrolled, low academic performance, or high academic performance gifted status, among others. Support a budgeting process that has clear and easily understood policies for where, how, and why dollars flow. This piece is interesting if I could unpack for a second. It was powerful to hear school leaders share that they, most of them shared that when they ask for things, they traditionally get what they ask for. But then when you dig a little deeper and ask if they were part of the budgeting process, if they were fully aware of their budget, many of them shared that they were not. There were some discrepancies there. So this is about a reformation of the budgeting process across the district. They weren't saying they didn't have what they need. I just want to drive that home. They weren't saying, we we don't have what we need, but the idea around them having a better voice and understanding of the process is what was shared with us by many school leaders. The district's strategic action plan should have equity goals and metrics throughout. Equity should not be independent from other goals, but part of each goal. That is important because we can't look at equity as this separate entity that like we're going to do math, language arts, social studies, science, and equity, right? Equity is not something separate, but it's something that should be baked in to everything that we do. And although it currently exists within the strategic plan, it needs to be fully fleshed out into every element within the plan. School and district systems and practices should be transparent, implemented consistently and with fidelity, and involve input from stakeholders. Okay. We talk about culture. School culture varies between schools, as does the level of diversity of staff and students. So if you look at this chart, each color actually represents the difference school year and it speaks to the level of diversity in the teaching staff of each school or the staff period of each school. So it's very clear that Tucker has the most diverse staff. Uh, Colicott, Cunningham, Glover, uh, Pierce, Milton, eh, has a less than that as far as diversity is concerned in their teaching population. Uh, school leaders were very aware of this and, you know, I know there isn't like a magic place you can go to just hire, you know, teachers of color. So it is on people's radar, but it's something that we noted because as you see by this chart, the 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 it's glaring in the school that has the most diversity in its teaching staff. And across the district, we could enhance the equitable uh race, if you will, of teachers across buildings. A recommendation for this is the most important assets needed to build an equitable school district are commitment and count and accountability. Currently, not everyone in the community is committed to this cause and plans do not identify those who are accountable and responsible for implementation. Many stakeholders see the action as optional, someone else's job, or something to be postponed until after the pandemic. In order to gain commitment, include stakeholders in generating solutions and hold all levels of staff accountable for achieving equity goals. This piece is really important because in engaging with um school leaders, and I'll be frank, even district leaders, when asked about equity and the equity goals, many times we receive the spot, the response, oh, yes, that's Somali, like Somali is the equity person, right? Not like the district is working towards equity or we as a community are working towards equity or we all as a community are moving towards equity. I can't tell you how many responses I got from adults who were literally like, yes, Somali does equity, right? As as if this is not a a unified goal. It's something that that this one person or this one person for this, you know, he is going to handle, you know, and and the, we won't have movement if we believe that it's all up to one person in the district to do that. And where students maybe who are unaware may feel like that or parents who are not as immediately aligned, but to hear that from district-level employees is, it shares that the mission is not yet, you know, fully accepted and committed to by everyone across the district. And we also want to build a common understanding and definition of what equity is and what it looks like in Milton Public Schools. We want to empower stakeholders with the data they need to discover where inequities are happening in their own schools and classrooms and conduct root cause analyses to determine why these disproportionality continue to occur in the district. And to really build in the groups like Mark and C B M to 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 make this unified move towards equity and and sort of squeeze the juice out of every community stakeholder to help move in that direction. I also wanted to just note here, those were the high-leverage uh factors that support and the factors that limit. But I also, many people have mentioned this already, but I also want to just note where we are in this process. Because in some uh cases, I think people believe that after this equity audit, like, okay, we've arrived or we're done. And in essence, the equity audit is actually the beginning, right? This is the needs assessment. When we conduct this quality review, uh, we're the outside agency that came in and worked with the district to engage in this review. But moving forward, these are some steps that you can take to continue this work. Is really do a deep root cause analysis across the district to examine some of those disproportionality. Make sure that the objectives in the strategic plan are coherent and that there are goals with levers moving forward and it's a, it's it's time-based and we're all committed to it. We could build stakeholder engagement, determine the people that really need to be at the table and part of the solution. Then develop the theory of action. Share the metrics that you want to look for across this work as the evidence of impact. You're going to action plan with formal action steps with deadlines and benchmarks along the way to determine how successful you're being. And then look at the resource alignment. How can we bring the right people and and resources into the project and into the process to support this increase and growth of equity across the district? Okay. So I am now going to formally open it up for questioning or questions. And myself and Dr. Jeff Tegnell and Dr. Lozama and Mindy, we can all respond to questions. I wonder, uh, Ms. Eberhard, if you want to maybe facilitate this and help us so it's just a smooth process. And I'm going to stop sharing so we can uh go back to the full screen. Thank you.
So, yes, Chris, um, thank you. Thank you so much for that presentation. Before I start, Superintendent Jet, did you want to jump in with anything first before I reopen it up to the committee members?
Uh, no, I do not. I just want to thank uh Chris Finn and his team for their uh thorough examination of the Milton Public Schools and the feedback that they have. Obviously, we have a lot of work to do unpacking this information. And as you alluded to, looking at the root causes for some of the inequities. And one of the things that I want to share with the viewing audience is to please remember, our job as educators and educational leaders is to prepare students for duties of citizenship and make sure that we are preparing every student with the skills and the content knowledge that they need to be successful uh with any post-op, post-secondary opportunities that they wish to explore. So that is our goal, that's our focus, and we're going to be, we're going to have a steadfast commitment to making sure that we get this work done. And what it does, it 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 allows us to focus on every single student in the Milton Public Schools. And I would extend that to the faculty and staff as well. In order for them to perform and in in display their A-game, they too need to be, feel supported. And I just call on the community, uh, I call on the community to show their support for our educators in because this is the work that we do, this is the work that we sign up for, and this is what we're committed to doing. So thank you and your team for the work that you've done and I look forward to uh partnering with all stakeholders in the community and make sure that we uh enhance the educational experience of the Milton Public Schools for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Jet. Okay, so school committee members, if you want to raise your hand in the Zoom if you would like to ask the um the group a question, um, Betty?
Yep, um, going back to a earlier um slide, I was wondering if you could elaborate on the focus groups and the makeup of the focus groups that you conducted? And also, I was wondering if you could comment about the percentage of parents and faculty that participated in the survey and how that was vis-à-vis um, how vi- how viable it is, like with a twelve percent parent? Is, was that a a low amount? Was that a typical amount? Because I I didn't really know about that.
Got you. So first, let me share that the focus groups were varied. They included teachers and families and community stakeholders. We genuinely wanted to hear from parents across the district at every school level. Uh, we we spoke to parents who had students who were English language learners, parents who had students with disabilities, parents in the French immersion program, not in the French immersion program. It was really broad and uh varied across the district. I'll share that, um, we also, towards the end, we got requests for people who wanted to have another voice, who felt like they had not had an opportunity to share. So we added more teacher-focused groups and we had more focus groups for community stakeholders as well. So we added them throughout the process to hopefully get as many voices as possible in the process. The survey was voluntary, right? So we got people who wanted to share and who who felt compelled to share their information. I would share that the students, we got the biggest response from the students. Um, I was able to speak to some students too who who took it and shared that, you know, some kids genuinely were not interested. They just, I mean, and based on like, I wanted to go to lunch. I didn't want to, like, I wanted to go to a sports class or something else and just didn't want to. But I think it was powerful that we got such a great response from the students. Um, what I have found in this process, doing these quality reviews across the country, uh, and I'm going to be really frank here for a minute, is the kids really give it up, right? The kids, the kids don't really have a filter, you know, in my experience. Sometimes you'll find district-level people, teachers, school leaders, who might be guarded and might be very wary of what to say and how should I say this? But the students are oftentimes so honest and frank that they sometimes give us the the most raw and real information about what's happening in the school. So I I believe the parent was twelve percent. I'm trying to quickly look at this slide here.
It was.
Right, which is not a great number for parents. It's not a high return rate. But what I will say is some parents even shared with me that because they were part of a focus group, they did not feel then compelled to also do the survey. So there are a few parents who were in both, right? Who were part of focus groups and others who shared, I didn't do the survey because I knew I was going to join this focus group and I can share my opinion in the focus group. So we have a mix that. And I also note that many of the community stakeholder groups, I would say most of the community stakeholder groups were also parents, right? So they weren't just solely, I don't know that we spoke to many people who shared they did not have a child somewhere in the Milton Public School District. So if you you add that part in, we spoke to a great deal of parents as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Beverly?
Um, first, I want to thank you all for being so comprehensive in your review and very clear in your recommendations. It makes it much easier to consume this information and think forward about our strategic planning that's coming up. Um, I have two categories of questions. Um, one has to do with the disproportionate rates of discipline in special education referrals and the fact that almost every subgroup is is having, that there's something negative that's happening to them relative to the incident rates among students that are white. And I'm wondering if if you can share how these students articulated, how they feel and experience school. Um, I'm equally concerned about the adults in our community that experienced mental health crises associated with the survey portion of the review. Because ultimately, we have to decide as a town, how do we support the adults who are experiencing mental health crises? But at the same time, as a school committee and as faculty and administrative- and as faculty and administration of a school district, we have a disproportionate amount of responsibility to our children. And if you can talk through, number one, some of the insights you may have had about children and how they're experiencing this, especially those kids affected by discipline and special education referrals. And I do want the town to reflect on, how do we service our kids? Because we cannot leave them behind at expense of the adults that need more support. But the support isn't something that the schools can give at this time.
So I'll share first. In engaging with students, I have to say, many students responded that they really felt safe and supported in their schools, right? They may be at a level where they don't recognize the disproportionality to the level that we do. They may not be aware that, you know, more black students are being suspended. You know, they see it from their lens and they, for the most part, see their connection to their teachers in their school. But in some students' responses, you know, and I know Renee, who my partner who's on here, she did a great deal with the survey. She might be able to share even more data around this. But I would say from the student's lens, oftentimes, they're not aware of these disproportionality. What I'll say about the adults, though, is really powerful what you shared is because, you know, what I'm always trying to share in these sessions is that none of these things are isolated, right? They're all connected like this web, if you will, across the district. So you noted in the area where teachers felt that they may not, or the lion's share of teachers felt that they weren't properly trained to be culturally responsive to all of their teachers, to their students. It happens in a similar way with students with disabilities, right? If you're a teacher who hasn't received a great deal of training around students with disabilities, how to support them, how to tailor and structure to them, how to recognize their triggers or what have you, a student's misbehavior or off-class behavior may immediately be perceived as just rude and disruptive. So we're going to send this child out. But when you dig deeper, you'll learn that this behavior is literally part of this student's disability. So with, you know, a student who's, I E P says he taps on the table to help himself calm down. A teacher who's not aware of that will kick a student out of class for tapping on the table, even though it's been recognized that this is part of the disability. So the teacher training and the teacher's level of understanding as to how to support the different subgroups is crucial in this process. And the evidence was there and that the lion's share of teachers said they did not feel fully prepared. So we do want to be mindful that, we want to send teachers into classrooms with all of the preparation they need to be aware of these things so as to better support the students that they're serving in the classroom.
That was very insightful. Thank you very much. And my second question has to do with the point you made about a review of our social studies curriculum. And, you know, whether you or James or Karen would like to answer this. I would like to know, is Milton Public Schools teaching critical race theory? And then, secondly, to talk about what were the changes that were made in the history curriculum? And how do we currently address issues of race or sexuality in terms of what is being taught in our schools?
I'm going to ask Mindy. Mindy, would you mind sharing a little bit about the social studies curriculum? Mindy from L N P?
Sure, and I'm actually going to pass it to Dr. Tegnell because he did the review of the social studies curriculum. So I think he'll have most of the information for social studies.
Excellent.
I'm muted. Good. So you asked about social studies curriculum. And what I found is that the social studies program is undergoing a transformation right now. We saw, especially at the high school, that new courses are being created that would be very engaging to diverse students, such as the African diaspora course and the Fourth Estate course on government and the media. We also saw that a new social studies coordinator has been appointed who's going to, you know, be very instrumental in taking the program in hand. My perception was that in K five, there was an incomplete fidelity to state frameworks. And I believe that there's going to be a review of the social studies curriculum and an attempt to make them reflect more of the standards that the state has required social studies teachers to address. As to middle school, we, you know, again, there's a lack of district curriculum. But I saw that teaching tolerance and other sources of curriculum are being adopted. Again, my expectation would be that the social studies coordinator, K eight, and the social studies chair at high school will be very instrumental in taking a good look at this program and doing the requisite work with teachers in order to develop more district-wide materials. The, as to critical race theory, we really don't. I think it's a canard that critical race theory is somehow influencing, you know, instruction in K twelve classrooms. I don't think teachers are very aware of what critical race theory is. I do believe that we're attempting to create curriculum that provides engagement for diverse groups of students so that they can see themselves in the curriculum and their peers will see, again, their ethnic and racial groups part in the American saga. And so I think that's the intent of making the curriculum more diverse and more equitable.
If I could, if I could just add to that, as a superintendent of Milton Public Schools and Dr. Tegnell, thank you very much for your comments. Without a doubt, I want to make it known very clearly on this meeting, we are not teaching critical race theory in the middle Milton Public Schools. What we are asking teachers to do to be culturally responsive or culturally responsive curriculum, so that way you could identify the student's uniqueness and the appreciation of those who are around them. We also want to make sure there's a wide variety of instructional practices that people could kind of see themselves reflected in the curriculum in certain ways. And we provide different choices, kind of like what we've been talking about, personalizing learning and different things like that. As long as the students are able to illustrate that they understand the content and the skills, that is what we're most focusing on. And I think sometimes, like, equity is being misinterpreted as race only and culturally responsive curriculum and culturally responsive teaching is being associated with critical race theory in the equity audit is being associated with a transgender survey. And I think there's a lot of narratives that are out there. And I'm just asking for the public, and I want you to understand, you got to think about it, the vast majority of our teachers and staff are Caucasian. And it doesn't matter, and I've often said, it doesn't matter if it's a black one or the white one, as long as it's the right one. And if we could just simply just allow people to reflect upon that. And we're not saying all white people are racist. I did have a very lengthy conversation with a couple of people today about that to clarify that because I understand that there are things that are being reported in the paper or they're referring to social media. We are focusing on a culturally responsive curriculum and teaching, which means that we're paying attention to the learning styles in a variety of instructional practices, expanded our repertoire to meet the needs of every student. So if, I hope that clarifies that as best we can. And if not, we definitely continue the conversation because we know the entire community is not on this meeting. And we have these conversations throughout the August and throughout the academic year. And I hope people will come to those meetings with an open mind, with a willingness to learn and not come jaded with an already preconceived notion about what it is that we're doing.
Well, thank you both for that explanation. And I am very concerned that the level of misinformation about what's being taught, as well as that the quality review, as Chris so articulately described, was very comprehensive. It included surveys and focus groups and interviews. And, but unfortunately, the same misinformation is getting published every week. And I'm not sure what editorial responsibility we have as a school committee, but I think we need to work in partnership with the communication outlets in town and what people tend to use, like Facebook or the editorial page for the Milton Times, to make sure that we are responsibly communicating what's actually happening so we don't perpetuate misinformation that causes so much distress. None of this work should have caused anyone to have a mental health crisis. It's very disheartening that we, as a community, I know that we have a catchment zone that supports adults in Milton, and we need to get people the services they need so that what's happening for students in schools doesn't hurt the adults in our town, for which James and the rest of us, we don't have responsibility for them. But we do, we do need to care for them as members of our community. And if there's anything that we can do in partnership with these families or the paper to make sure that people get the services they need, while the rest of us are working on making sure our students, that the issues that have been addressed here are addressed in a way that reflects our goals, I think we'll get so much further. But I don't want this work to be a hindrance for the adults in this area. And thank you all for all that you've done to make sure that this happens thoughtfully.
Elaine, go ahead, Dr. Craighead, sorry.
Member Ross Denny was so eloquent on this that I hesitate to follow up. But I completely agree that we somehow not only need to get the message out there that the equity audit is more than one survey, but get it to stick because we've said it at this meeting or, you know, an episode of this meeting many, many times. We've said it in meetings with the Warren Committee. We've said it at various points. But I do agree that we need to make a concerted effort to make it clear what was at stake, what the money was spent on. And I'm really especially happy about this presentation because it made so clear and so concrete the work that you did and that still so much needs to be done and what you incorporated into the audit. So I thank you for that. I'm also, like Bev, I'm really concerned about the disproportionality of punishments to low-income students and students of color and placements in sped. I think this is an absolutely critical crisis area that we need to work on immediately. I am wondering, though, given that most of the people who've spoken tonight, whether it's Citizen Speak or the colleagues who have spoken before me, have talked about every marginalized individual equity across the board, that it's not just race. And what I'm seeing in the presentation tonight is, except for one area where you did talk about low-income students, this is a presentation on race and racial disproportionality in various ways. And as I said, it raised important concerns. I also heard you on the fact that this is simply a snapshot and that this was really covering the big areas. But a lot of attention has been paid, as you might know, to questions around sexuality that were on the survey. I know a lot of parents who would be interested in your findings on how, for instance, transgender students feel that they are safe and secure in proportion to the cohort. Whether or not LGBT students as a cohort feel bullied or marginalized or et cetera. So I'm wondering if you could speak to that a little bit as well.
Yes, actually, some of the survey information that's shared in the more detailed report disaggregates it down to the layer of students who identify as X in their sexual preference or what have you. They, they're also, it's also important to note, to your point, that it is not solely about race, right? And yes, those things were highlighted in this particular presentation. But there were discussions with district leaders about, do they feel that people second guess them because they're a woman, right? There are some gender, you know, discussions made. Like, all of these questions were brought out in the focus groups and what have you. But these are the ones that just rose to the top where we're giving you this brief snapshot. So you will see a little bit more about that information in the formal report. And to your point, that's another one where James Jett was talking about how people have boiled things down to just the $50,000 survey or what have you. Unfortunately, when we engage in the equity work, people tend to boil it down to just race, but it really is not. There are questions in the focus groups, questions on the surveys, questions for students and school leaders that ran the gamut about economically disadvantaged, about where you literally are in the town and how the town is set up and there are areas that are lined for this. I mean, all of those things came up, and many of those things are mentioned in the report. So you will get a greater look at that or a deeper look at that when you get the formal report. Some of those things are spoken to. Thank you.
Lizzy, Dr. Carol?
Thank you. I'll just echo my colleagues to thank you, Mr. Finn, and to your colleagues for sharing this really comprehensive overview with us of this report. I'm very eager, of course, to dig into the full report when we are able to see that. One initial question, I have a couple of questions and then a comment. But an initial question is just, can you please confirm? And maybe, Mr. Jett, this is partly for you as well. This report, when it is completed and shared back to the district, will be available publicly to all members of the Milton community. Is that correct? And how will that be shared so that everybody has the opportunity to read the report?
Obviously, we invested in that. We will send that report out in a link fashion. Obviously, sending a significant report with pages might be a little more difficult, but it will be a link that will go out to folks. We will be addressing this and talking about the work that we have in front of us in many different platforms and many different outlets and afford folks the opportunity to do it. Because I guess the best, the best way to combat misinformation is to give the correct information. And so we will have these opportunities to speak to families. And we have done this throughout the spring. I have had opportunities to speak with people individually and in small groups who asked about it, and I've done that. So yes, our goal is, we made an investment with taxpayers' dollars to have this equity audit, and we want to be able to share this equity audit with the folks at hand. I also want to emphasize what Chris Finn said because I think it's very important. He highlighted a couple of findings he had stating, or at least it was said to us and stating that the Milton Public Schools have the, all of the ingredients to be what you will call equitable and very successful district. We just need to bring these things together and we just need to bolster up some of the areas that we have weaknesses. Anyone that goes through an equity audit, whether it's a school, a business, there's going to be findings for improvements. And if anybody don't think that we need to improve in certain areas, then we should not be in this business. We should always be evaluating ourselves, assessing ourselves, and moving forward and making those necessary improvements. And so I anticipate that this will be going out to everybody. Not anticipate, I expect it to.
Great, thank you very much for confirming that. And I'm sure we will all work together to figure out what are those appropriate venues or avenues for the community to ask questions and receive responses, to share their feedback. I know this will be a process sort of unfolding over the coming weeks and months as we embark on, you know, the work we clearly have to do to respond to this information. One other question, I guess, is similar to Dr. Craighead's question regarding LGBTQ plus students. To Dr. Craighead's question regarding LGBTQ plus students. And whether there were any initial findings that emerged that are possible to share tonight around their experiences. I'm I'm wondering similarly about special needs students and whether there were any sort of headlines. Beyond what is shared in the slide deck. That you are able to let us know about this evening. I'm sure there would be more information in the in the full report.
Yes, I can speak a little bit to the experience of students with disabilities in the district and speaking to their parents. And it and it really was varied, you know, we we spoke to some parents who felt like. We haven't received the resources we need. We're frustrated. We feel like we need support from the school, from the district. Then I'll tell you, we spoke to probably an equal amount of parents who said, we received everything that we needed. We received the support from the district. We received an out of placement, you know, out of district placement for our child. That, you know, in triangulating that data, there was nothing that rose to the level that was, you know, horribly detrimental about students with disabilities. It kind of evened out in the aggregate as far as how parents felt about how their students were treated in their school and the resources that they received. We do speak a little bit more about students with disabilities in the report, so you'll get that deeper information. But I don't have any other specific headlines around the LGBTQIA students for this evening.
If I if I could just add one more piece too, and I understand that the work is being done, but people need to understand. That we're just getting this presentation this evening. We don't have the final report. And quite frankly, as a superintendent, I I think it's incumbent upon me to make sure that our administrators, our district leaders. And we have that report and able to unpack and understand it. So when it is public, we are able to adequately and appropriately respond to any questions that people may have. So I want to make it clear, although we anticipate sharing this with the community. We want to make sure that we fully have our understanding. I don't have the final report and everything and neither do our principals. This this is hot off the press with this presentation and we want to make sure that we move there. So for parents, yes, Cambridge Education has shared that report with us and when it's available, we will make sure it's sent to folks. In a timely manner down the road and it will be posted on our webpage and people have the link to that and people have the opportunity to review. And then we anticipate, not necessarily in the summer, obviously for folks that may not know, some folks or principals have various different. Vacation times during the summer months and our staff is on vacation and we want to make sure, but we will definitely have those forums. For you in the upcoming academic year, but the we the report will be sent out later.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. I'm sorry, my daughter Julia is.
Did you have some other questions, Lizzie, that you?
Well, I really just wanted to, I guess, make a couple of observations as we. You know, receive this information tonight and prepare to move on from here as as a school committee, as Milton Public Schools. And just as a community, so I I'm interested in the action planning, the final slide that you shared. And I guess one thing I'm thinking about is. I completely see the sequencing, the very important need to kind of work through. You know, a series of steps to do that root cause analysis, to kind of do the strategic planning. That we are preparing to do and and let this work build on itself and not kind of get ahead of ourselves. So I I really see that and I thank you for helping kind of lay this out for us. Dr. Jean Charrow referred to this report before we saw it as a roadmap and I I that resonates. I feel like I'm very excited to take this information, which clearly has come to us through a very rigorous process. And thank you for laying that out tonight and to use this as a roadmap. At the same time, I'm also mindful that we kind of have to. Do both. We have to follow a thoughtful process that iterates and sort of builds on a strong foundation of this work. To make necessary changes to address these problems that have now been much more fully revealed to us. While at the same time, we can't wait, for example, to begin aligning our resources. So, you know, as we all know, we are at a very unique moment where we have an infusion of. Resources coming to us from the federal government, for example. Some of that is, you know, able to be used to address some of these issues that we see in this report. We need to have urgency around doing this alignment. And we can't wait for, you know, each kind of action step to be completed before fully moving on to the next one. If that makes sense. So I'm just wrapping my mind around the fact that, you know, clearly we have all this work to do. And I know we can do it and I'm really excited. I think of this not just as a roadmap, but it is a call to action to all of us as a town and as a district. And I'm I'm very eager to roll up my sleeves and do what I can to participate in, you know, aligning our policies. Kind of doing the strategic planning that this sets us up to do. To think about, you know, what we're doing with our budget to make sure we have the resources we want. In order to achieve these outcomes that we need. So that's that's just that. I'll stop there on that. But the last thing I wanted to sort of highlight is. The findings that have emerged here around teachers articulating the need for support. As well as the point. Around our need to push ourselves around accountability and evaluation at different levels of our system. And just recognizing that those things go hand in hand. Support and accountability need to work together to kind of help us. Do the best that we can for our students, which clearly we we do have to do so much better. And so I I'm really grateful to all of you for the time you spent. It went so far beyond the survey and that is clear in what you've shared. Although the survey is also very important and I'm especially eager to see the student responses, which I anticipate will be in that final report. And yeah, I I will stop there. I could keep going, but we will keep going. We're going to keep talking about this. Thank you.
So I I just want to say to, if I can call you all by your first names, because. My tired tongue at this time of night will mess up your last names, but to Chris, to Mindy, to Jeff, to Keith and to Renee. I just want to say thank you so much for a very comprehensive initial finding for for the community and for the committee. This is such important work. It's such necessary work. I know that it's hard. It's really hard work, but it's necessary and it benefits all students, as you were saying before, Chris, as Superintendent Jett has said so many, many times. Some of the data breaks my heart, you know, when I think about the students that are attached that four times higher, five times higher, six times higher. Disproportionality in terms of suspensions and disciplines and as they relate to special needs and as they relate to students of color, that breaks my heart. I work with little children and I'm the start of their journey in life as an educator. And I want for those disproportionately to disappear for students as they get older. And this is a process. So for the community to understand that this is just an initial finding, a report of things that stood out. The larger report will come to the district. It will be a public document. It will be a public record. It will be shared with everyone. And there will be opportunities to discuss and reflect as a community. As I've said so many times over the last year and a half, school committee meetings are not that forum, right? They're legislative body meetings for people to report out on happenings in the district, on reports and findings, and then to make movement going forward. We will have forums and opportunities to engage with the community in conversation. School committee meetings just aren't set up for that. So I just, I want the community to be reassured that you will all be part of this process and you will all be, you will all be involved in the conversation. And I just wanted to sum up some things for the community before I turn it back over to Superintendent Jett. So from from my point of view, just listening to to the the general report, you know, it's clear that there's continued to be some opportunity gaps. In our district for students and we've been discussing that over the last few years. And this this report and the data is going to clarify that in a in a more in a more comprehensive way. You know, there's some questions about our French immersion program that starts in the first grade and really sets the foundation for our district and what does that mean? And what does that mean as students age up into the middle school and high school? If their interactions with students of different races and ethnicities are limited in our elementary school programs? That's a big question for us as this committee to think about as we move forward, right? There's an accountability question and how do we make everyone invested in accountability across the district and across the town? We need to do better professional development and we need to support our teachers to make them feel one hundred percent. That they can teach culturally competent ways to students, right? We need to think more about the budget. If that was a really interesting finding for me, when we have site counters and meetings and hearings. But clearly, we need to do some some more comprehensive thought about how do we involve more people and how do we make people feel more invested in the budget process? We need to better define equity and what does that mean in the Milton Public Schools and what does that mean to the town of Milton? Because the schools are one part of a larger community and we all need to sort of think about that, right? And we need to 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 create a more comprehensive understanding that we're all responsible for equity. So, you know, I just really can't thank you enough for this report. You've given us so much to think about, so much to work with. And I am hopeful. I am eternal, hopeful, optimistic, because I'm an educator of young children and I know. That we need to do a better job. You can love our country in all its flaws and all of its challenges. Because it represents the fact that we're all human and that humans are complex creatures. And we can do better and I know we will do better in the town and where this is going to be the start for us of a process that will move forward. So I just want to thank all of you. If you'd like to say anything, Chris, to wrap it up.
I want to first commend you on your summation. You are like the summation master right now. That was really thoughtful how you drew drew all of those different lines together. I do want to just very humbly say thank you. Thank you to James Jet. Thank you to Karen. I'm going to go ahead and submit that even beyond being something that's important, I'm going to share that as an already high performing district. I'm going to share this is something brave to do, right? Because in a lot of ways, you didn't have to dig this deep, look this deep. We could have just done what we've always done, remained if we beat the state academically. You know, no one kind of, we don't have to kind of look under the the couch to see what's what's dirty under there. We can just keep it moving. And you guys have decided as a district to embark in this really important and powerful and potentially difficult and challenging work. But I salute you all. I thank you for the opportunity to share this evening. I thank my partners in this work and Keith and Mindy and Jeff. And and I thank some of the thoughtful comments and questions that were asked by the team here this evening. It expresses your investment in this work and how you guys are the team to move forward. I thank you again. You will be receiving that report and please reach out to us for any other questions or concerns. And we thank you for having this platform to share with you all this evening.
Thank you so much, Chris and Keith and Mindy and Jeff and Renee. Have a peaceful evening and we look forward to our continued work with you. All right. All right, Superintendent Jett, you're still up. You're still up.
And I wish I had the opportunity to say this while I.
I'm so sorry.
I too want to thank them for the efforts and I just wanted to respond to Dr. Carol's point. Although they did a good job with the equity audit, a great job in digging deep, some of the findings that they had, we already knew about and we've already started some of the work on it. All of our principals have gone through the restorative justice training and they continue to do that. The disproportionality, that's something we were already well aware of. So I do want to caution people that we want to move forward, but we want to move forward very strategically and very intentional with the work that we do. We have a steering committee that was that was heavily articulated and heavily vetted with parents, students. There's a training that's taking place over the course of the summer that already began and doing some of that initial groundwork. And then when we get the report, the full report, and we're able to really do some of that root cause analysis, we'll do that. So some of some of it, and you're absolutely right, any federal money that we get, we want to be very strategic and I repeat it here. As I always said, our budget reflects what we value. And I hope the town understands that. I hope our parents and guardians understand that. And I want to make sure that the faculty and staff understand the budget is what we value. And so we we need to think about that strategically and I know there was a lot of talk about the budget over this past year. We advocated publicly in many different forums. What was some of our needs and unfortunately it didn't go in our favor, but we're going to continue to advocate for it and we're going to do. And and try to use some of this federal money that we're coming in to supplement some of the things that we asked for that hopefully we could move forward on. But that, I want to be very, very clear, the money we're getting from the government at this point in time is temporary and does come with some restrictions. So, but I do appreciate your comment, but I, hopefully we move forward. At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Spalding, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Personnel, to kind of unmute herself. She's going to give you a quick update on the bias incident and sexual misconduct reporting, some of the work that we started there. So Dr. Spalding.
Happy to. Thank you. So just wanted to give a quick update on the status of the, what we're now calling the Milton Public Schools Bias Incident and Sexual Misconduct Reporting System. That title might change a little bit. It's a little bit different from what it was when we began this journey and and this journey began. I would say probably the end of last summer, starting in the fall. I and administrators from the, actually, elementary, middle and high school. As well as parents about ended up being closer to seven or eight of them. So we had a group, we met a couple of times in early fall with the intent of really surfacing the experiences that. Students have in school through the eyes of their parents and guardians initially. So we started that work in the fall. From that also extended to having some, I had some conversations and did some outreach to other districts to see what they had in place. And really, our goal, I should have prefaced with this, our goal was to create a consistent system to be used by all six schools. For a way in which similar, we we kind of have been comparing it a little bit to the to the bullying reporting system where where it's kind of a. You get the word out and anyone walking down the hallway, you can ask them, how do you, do you know how to report a bullying incident? And they say, yes, like that's where we want to get to in terms of microaggressions that students might experience or. Bias that they might experience or sexual misconduct. And so that was really our goal. And so I reached out to some other districts, especially want to give a shout out to the Assistant Superintendent for Equity in the Boston Public Schools. Becky Schuster, who gave a lot of her time, as well as others in other other districts. And so what we have at this point is we have sort of a final draft of the form. It's been looked at by a number of stakeholders and that feedback was incorporated. We elevated student voices. That and as you know, Senior Director Prak Martins started in December, I think it was. I forget the exact date. But just started in December, so she jumped in into the process. She actually has a strong background in restorative justice, restorative practice, which is particularly useful in in this area. And so she's actually been meeting for all kinds of reasons and and good stuff, meeting with students all year long. Some of the things that I learned in meeting, for example, with the some of the leaders at the the young leaders at the high school. Was I asked questions, you know, I sort of said, tell me about your experiences with bias or microaggressions and and so they shared their experiences and. And I asked how they learned the vocabulary, the language to attach to what they were experiencing. And many of them said from social media, which made me almost fall off the chair and I said, well, wait a minute. We need to make sure that we have ways in which we're giving students the language to describe the kinds of things that they might be experiencing. So that we can best address it. So anyways, that was some of the things that that we learned about. We have a draft of what we're calling a flow chart, which is really to bring again some consistency in terms of what happens when a report comes in. Who sees it? Who views it? Where does that data get stored? How often is that data looked at? Things like that. What's the follow up? And and just to, I should have given this definition at the beginning, when I refer to restorative justice or or restorative practice. What I mean is really articulating what is the harm that was done and how can we address the harm that was done? In terms of both the incident, in terms of all parties that might be directly involved, as well as anyone who might be. Involved in further witnessing and and things like that. So principals and assistants, as we sort of made our way through the through the year. We pressed pause and said, oh, wait a minute, we're, you know, we have this goal of getting this system in place and getting it out. And we have to do, and many of you spoke to it in this in this meeting, we have to make sure that we're supporting the folks in. We have to make sure that we're supporting the folks in terms of professional development. Who will actually be sort of on the ground running, uh, receiving reports and and following up on them and and things like that. And, um, so the principals and assistant principals are working towards completing tier one, tier two and tier three. Training by Suffolk University Center for Restorative Justice. And tier one is circle training and introduction to restorative practice. Tier two is addressing conflict and harm when using restorative practice. Um, and tier three is restorative conferencing for discipline. Um, and so they are making their way, um, through those trainings. Work this summer includes crafting and refining communications for students and staff and families. Information for the website flyers to be sent out, um, as well as refining materials and sort of educational materials for like opening assemblies with staff and students in the fall. Professional development and so continued professional development, uh, for those receiving the report and responsible, um, for the follow up will take place, um, as part of the leadership retreat. Again, Director Prak Martins, this is definitely one of her many areas of expertise, um, but she'll be facilitating professional development with leaders. As well as doing that job embedded, um, uh, professional development as reports come in and as we're making our way through, um, through the process. And then the district data, uh, the district wide data team, sorry. But we'll initiate conversations about how we're, uh, again, building this data system. So how are we reflecting on these reports over time and what patterns are we seeing and what proactive things can we do in terms of shifting culture? In the buildings. Um, and then one final piece that you'll hear more about, um, most likely at another meeting. But it links back to the disproportionality. Also involved in all of this work, uh, has has been, um, the Director of People, Personnel and Services, Susan Muselli. And, uh, she has submitted a plan to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to address disproportionalsities. Um, and she worked collaboratively, um, with leaders, um, in the district and and one of the pieces in that proposal or proposed plan, um, is a restorative practice coach, um, to work, um, specifically again to support building capacity. Within not only leadership, but teachers in the classroom and and other folks who work with students around really understanding what restorative practice is, what restorative justice is, um, and how we can shift our our practices and in and culture in that direction. Um, so that was the brief update, um, of where we're at, um, with the Milton Public Schools Bias Incident and Sexual Misconduct Reporting System.
Thank you, Dr. Spalding. Beverly, if anyone have any questions, Beverly, go ahead. Sorry.
No, I really appreciate the comprehensive overview of all the work that you've you've done to get to a point where you have a theory of change and how you plan on rolling it out. So thank you. I would love to hear of the, you described at a very high level, what the steps are to get from where we are. You know, from the training, making sure there's a common language to having systems in place. Could you share what you think are the three or four major milestones and what you think the timeline might be for accomplishing them? Like you don't have to go through the entire project plan in painful detail, but just high, high level overview of what you think are the major milestones and when each one would be done.
Happy to respond, although I should be, um, collaborating with others in my response, but I'll from my conversations with others. Cause I I want to make sure it's clear that this is a collaborative effort among a number of folks. But I would say, um, absolutely the 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 completion of the, um, restorative practice training. So so some of the administrators are are just about done with tier three, some are at tier two. So I imagine I predict that will be done by, um, the end of the summer, I would say. The, um, materials to be sent out, um, so another very important milestone is, um, sort of this communication effort, um, communicating to families, communicating to staff, communicating to staff has been in the loop. In terms of some of the feedback and, um, but on the tool of the form itself and sort of the system, but but a larger scale sort of communication piece that and then for students as well. Um, and those those, um, materials, we want to start to get those funneling out in early August, I would say even. I know lots of folks don't read things over the summer, but some do. Um, and so to sort of get those prepared and get those out. And then and and really, um, make sure that we're prepared with those materials, um, you know, whether it's the what or inclusive of rather, that beginning of the year presentation to students as we welcome them back. As well as ongoing opportunities through a number of different structures in the in the school. So I would say PD for absolutely, um, for leadership in particular, um, that being done by the end of the summer. Communication materials definitely by the end of the summer. And then I think that the data system, um, like who looks at the data? How often do they look at the data? I would say that that the goal of having that in place would be more sort of the maybe the end of or or into the beginning of January, end of December, beginning of January. The reason why I say that is because one of the things in conversations with other districts, um, that they said is, um, you know, that that first formal introduction of a consistent system, you know, across the district to really expect a high number of reports to come in. And that's not necessarily because incidents are going up and then later go down or anything, but but just because you're you're creating a new vehicle in which, which is good because it's what we want to do is surface the experiences and make sure we're creating supportive environments. But but that'll give us that that sort of figuring out the data system and how often to look at the data and what we do with it when we discover patterns and things like that. We'll have to get our hands on some of the data first, I think, um, to to sort of formulate that. So I think those are sort of the the big chunks, I would say. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you. And, um, is there been a specific staff member that's assigned to review it and respond?
To an incident specifically or the?
To what people are entering in the data system. So if I go in and I put something in, are you going to look at it? Will it be Susan Muselli?
Yeah. So so that is, so Director, Senior Director Prak Martins and I, um, actually, we're talking about that very thing last week as a matter of fact. She is doing sort of an over kind of look at protocols and and that. And so we've had a lot of conversation about it because it's a it's a system that one could report an incident, student to student, adult to student. And so there, that's some sensitive information depending on who, you know, and you want the the folks who can follow up, right? And have the sort of position authority to follow up, um, in in a way that will again, with the goal of creating a safe, welcoming community for everyone. So we're, we're still in the process of of determining that. And that's linked, I think, also to to looking at the data over time. Who should be looking at the data? At school data, at district level data, um, trends over time, things like that. So those are some of the finer details that we're still in conversation about and need to expand, um, you know, it's brainstorm with the two of us. And then we'll expand that to include other folks, um, in terms of that.
If I could, if I could just interject and I want to clarify, because I I I understand that this is this sense of urgency and immediacy. And people want specific timelines, but I also want to caution people. And we're talking about restorative justice. It can't just be with central office or the principals. It starts in the trenches with the teachers. We need to provide the PD in a professional, the professional development for the teachers to employ some of these strategies within the classroom to keep the students in the classroom is reactionary. So in order to do that, and this is why I say we need to be very cautious at the time. Our teachers are on vacation right now and we can't mandate that 500 or something educators come in the summer. So we, that is some of the work that we're going to be doing in some of our professional development sessions. So I understand that there's this urgency that people want these specific timelines. But I do, and it doesn't mean that we can't specifically work towards that, but I do think that there are intermediate steps that we have to take and make sure that we're all on the same page as administrators and then curriculum in in department heads, along with our instructional staff who are in the trenches with the students on a daily basis. So, um, great question. And I do want to caution because I, you know, we've all talked about this last year. It was consistently putting out fires week by weeks with evolving changes from DESI, concerns from the community, concerns about the audit, concerns about the model, the mask. You know, closing schools, pivoting or whatever the case may be. Now we want to be able to focus on teaching and learning, social emotional, uh, wellbeing of our students and staff, engage in all students and parents and guardians. In the equity work that we have to do. And as I shared with many people, those are going to be some of our four focus areas that we'll talk about. What that looks like and that'd be clearly articulated to our faculty, administrators, structural leaders, our staff. Then it'd be community, obviously school committee and communicated to the community. So they too know what our plans are, our goals in any specific timelines. Um, for any of the, uh, you know, initiatives. So.
The baby was adorable. And thank you for taking the time to answer my questions as well as the amount of work and effort it went into coming up with this system. I know it's brand new for the district, but it's, it's very progressive to be able to name this. And I want to say it was your idea, Karen, last summer. To identify this is an opportunity for, if we get information, we can do, we can do better. And having a timeline is more about project management, not a, you need to have this done now. But it's nice to know directionally where we're going and thank you for taking the time to explain it to us and those of us that are watching the meeting tonight.
Lizzie, go ahead.
Thank you. Just a very quick clarifying question. Thank you, Dr. Spalding, also for, um, sharing all this and all this work. So you mentioned that the building leaders are getting trained this summer and the training will sort of be ongoing. Um, and then Mr. Jet, of course, you're referring to teachers playing a key role in, uh, kind of implementing this system. Am I correct in understanding that the system is is really a, um, kind of a new infrastructure basically for our teachers and I'm assuming guidance counselors along with key administrators in the buildings to kind of do their work. Perhaps, you know, in a more coordinated fashion that is more proactive and providing that opportunity for students to share experiences where they need support. So it's not like a whole new system that we are, you know, purchasing for the district or we are not bringing in this like new, um, kind of, this is existing staff, providing them with a, um, kind of more effective way to to do their jobs and supporting students. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, sorry.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you, Lizzie. Good to point out. That would be a question. Mr. Jet, sorry. Thank you, Dr. Spalding. Anyone else have any questions about Dr. Spalding's report? Sorry. Mr. Jet, you wanna, sorry.
So one, one more thing on the agenda, uh, we wanted to take this opportunity to talk about a, a, a change in a job description, particularly of our IT director. Uh, unfortunately, that, uh, the change in that job description or classification has not happened in the last 11 plus years. And as we all could imagine, in terms of technology, there's so many advancements and changes that happen over the course of the years. And we want to bring it to the attention of the school committee, but also share it with the general public so they fully understand. We have, uh, an IT director that is now responsible, uh, from years ago, when we just had a couple of computer labs. Now the, uh, the person manages and maintains Chromebook inventory of over 5,000 devices. That person now manages and maintains over 5,000 Google accounts for all staff and students. That includes email for all staff, students at the middle school and high school. Manage and maintain the Google services, including classrooms, Google Meet, Google Drive. Also, for those who don't know, we made significant enhancements in our, uh, security with, uh, cameras in each of our buildings. Computer swipe cards, uh, HVAC system, uh, from many, many years ago and now new, uh, based on the newer, uh, buildings, uh, new buildings or, uh, renovated buildings. So this person is responsible for a lot more, over 450 network, uh, phones and and voicemail systems before. I'm kind of teasing, we had their rotary dial, but over, uh, over, uh, 900 iPads, uh, with the gym, uh, system on it and provide support for, uh, Chromebooks for all teachers and students in addition to some of our labs. That's also including our information system in our auditoriums. And it's so much more. So we wanted to bring that to the attention of the school committee and the general public because in addition to the, uh, changes in the job description. There was also a review and a look at that individual salary to bring it, uh, close to market value. And I emphasize close to market value, closer to the average of those who do do similar work in in similar districts. And also this individual has his work with us with MCAS tests and now becoming computerized online, uh, a advanced placement test at the high school park. Any services with ELL, all standardized testing. And then for those particularly at the elementary, middle and high school level, there's so many more working with food services, uh, in in our nursing, this uh, nursing and special ed, um, departments, uh, to help them with SNAP in the nurse's office, the software, NutriKids and food services. Car, uh, concourse library software, so many more things that have now advanced over the course of the last 10 years. And so we wanted to do our due diligence and look at that and revise that job description, but also compensate for the market value. So that was one of the, uh, contracts that, uh, myself, uh, Amy Dexter, um, and work with, um, and and tried to, uh, make right.
Is there anyone have any questions for Superintendent Jet? Dr. Lane Craighead?
Um, I don't have a question. I just, um, want to make clear, um, to the community that the reason we were able to do this recently, um, was that there were some unexpected retirements, um, that the the savings on those retirements were what enabled us to do this. It wasn't like we had a pot of money sitting there or hiding funds or anything like that. It was just, uh, a matter of, um, having those funds, um, surprisingly, um, truly retirements that were not expected, uh, not anticipated. So thanks, thanks, Superintendent.
And Dr. Craighead, if I could just add to that, not only just the retirements, but at that point, we didn't hire the new people. So we didn't even know what the staff exchanges would be at the time until we secured those, uh, positions. And to your point, we knew of some retirements prior to May 24th, prior to town meeting. And then we had a few others after that. And to be clear to the general public, when I say, uh, looking at a market value, we're not talking about a full salary. We're talking about incremental increase that that doesn't even come close to a full salary, yet let alone half of a quarter of a salary. It doesn't come to that, but also, uh, it doesn't have an impact on the town side and insurance because, um, that's already in place. So it's just a incremental increase. So I just wanted to make that clear as well. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question? Well, Superintendent Jet, I just want to thank you so much for a very comprehensive, um, very detailed superintendent's report this evening. And for reminding us always to be mindful of the process and the time it's going to take for us to do the thoughtful, necessary work that we need to do. And also to remind everyone that we're still dealing with a pandemic. We are fortunate to be having some good news, but also some, some worrisome news as well in the, in the, in the, and the state in the country, in the world. And I just think that we have to be mindful that, um, we're still all recovering from all of that trauma. Um, and that will be a continued part of our conversation moving forward into this next academic year. So I just wanted to thank you for that superintendent's report. Mr. Jet, if you'd like.
And I know it wasn't on a report, but I I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge how the school year extended for close to 850 students as of yet, as of today, who are participating in our many different summer programs from MSC to Universal to Camp Cunningham, to ESY. We even are doing some compensatory services for about 10 students with speech and language. So the buildings in the Milton Public Schools are still alive. And then I also wanted to acknowledge that although our schools And then I also wanted to acknowledge that although our school year ended on June eighteenth, for some of our athletic teams, those in track who really excelled and made it to the state tournament, uh, our baseball team lost in the semifinals. Uh, they had a great year. We got two D one prospects who were juniors who are going to be returning to us as pitchers. And I always feel as though we have a good team. And then I also wanted to acknowledge the rugby team, two-time state champions. Um, because of our success, they bumped us up from division two to division one. Even our first year in division one, our uh rugby team made it to the state finals, lost to BC High in the championship that was played at Milton High School. Um, but hot off the press, the golf rugby report, a national rugby news, news source just put out uh the men's college and high school rankings throughout the year. Milton High School Wildcats rugby team came in the top fifty in the country this past spring, ending up at number forty-four. But it's better than that. Twenty-five of the top fifty of private schools they could recruit from multiple different districts. Only twenty-five of them were public uh schools. So in essence, Milton made it in the top twenty-five in the country for public schools. Emphasizing in the country. So at a later date, that's hot off the press. We will have the rugby team, members of the track team and members of uh the baseball team come to a school committee because I do think although we're on summer vacation, they should be recognized for outstanding job. And that doesn't exclude the accomplishments of all of our other athletic teams, any athletic team that played a sport this year under these circumstances and successfully completed the season, a champions to me. So, and that goes to our performance in fine arts as well. So I just wanted to conclude with some positive news and hopefully we could have them come to a, a future meeting.
Yes, we would, we would love that. And um, uh, you know, I would point out briefly that the rugby, the rugby team and the, and the formation of a rugby team grew out of the community and the citizens of the community who wanted to see that happen for the town of Milton and engage the district in conversation. A really positive um outcome for students and so many opportunities, right? That that will lead for, for the students down the road. So yes, we look forward to a, a meeting in the future where they can come um and we can, and we can congratulate them in person perhaps. So. So the next agenda item is the chair's report. I, I bet you all didn't know that there's actually a policy that talks about the time limit of school committee meetings. I can challenge Dr. Carol, that we can find that policy, but there is actually a policy that talks about the limit of time for school committee meetings and we can find that in policy and talk about it. So I know it's mindful that it's nine thirteen and we've had a very, a very, um, I, I use the word intense meeting with lots of information to digest. So there are three things under the chair's report and I, I will share them um just in a, an overall comprehensive way. There is the Milton School Committee Subcommittee's that, there's a copy of that in the, in the information that Charlene sent to you. If you've looked it over, I do believe that, that I have finally captured the correct people in the correct places. But you are talking to me now, so, you know. Yes, Member White.
Ada used, has been a member of Health and Wellness for the last couple of years. I don't know if she said she doesn't want to do it anymore. I haven't asked her, but I noticed I was the only.
Yes, you are. I know. I, I realize that that's probably a problem. Um, but I will ask Member Rosemarin.
All right.
But for, for the, for the, for the moment, in terms of fi- finance, which is Dr. Elaine Krickhead, that Elizabeth White and Beverly Rostini are voting members for finance. And for policy and, and Dr. Krickhead is the chair. And for policy, um, Dr. Elizabeth Carroll is the chair. And then Dr. Elaine Krickhead and Ada Rosemarin are the two other voting members of those two committees. Okay? I would like to take a formal vote on those two committees tonight just because they are the two committees that, of which we make decisions that go before the community and are, are most responsibility. So if I could have a motion to approve the members of those two subcommittees.
Also, I'll move that.
Okay, wonderful. And then I would like to do a roll call vote to have it for the record for, for, for all time. Member White?
Yes.
Member Rostini?
Yes.
Dr. Krickhead?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
And, and Margaret Everhart? Yes. Okay, wonderful. And the rest of the committees, we can review them again at our, our retreat, but I'm pretty sure that they're all stable and then have a final vote on the rest of them at our next um school committee meeting at the, at the end of August. Um, and then we still have some things to discuss about other committees as well that we wanted to talk about at our retreat. So that's the, the subcommittees. That was that. Um, you also had in your packet a draft agenda for our school committee retreat, which is scheduled for August fourth, I believe, two thousand twenty-one. As you can see in my usual um fashion, packed in six hours worth of conversation. Okay? Um, now, I'm not really sure exactly yet um what that is going to look like. If six hours would occur on the fourth or it might occur over two different meetings. But there are many things for us to consider at our retreat in terms of our own goals, in terms of our school committee calendar, in terms of the superintendent's goals and the evaluation process for the superintendent that we would need to determine and also to discuss the strategic plan, budget planning and policy. Those are the main things that are on our agenda for the retreat. I will have Charlene post um this information under school committee information meeting so other, other members of the community can look at it. But if you all have any thoughts or comments about it right now, feel free to share. Otherwise, um, we can, um, we can discuss it more. So I'll start with them, uh, Member Rostini and then Dr. Krickhead. Go ahead, Beverly.
Um, my question is for Superintendent Jet. Do you think by the time we meet, the leadership team would have identified what they think are priorities so that it informs our discussion?
Yes.
Dr. Krickhead?
Um, yes, I, I just want to let um everyone know, I already informed the chair about this, but I was assigned um training to become um the ADA coordinator at my school in addition to my other duties. And I have training all day on the fourth from nine to five. So it would be my preference that we do it in two, three-hour bursts or something like that. It would also be my preference just because if we're doing this after a workday or attached to part of a workday, six hours is a long time. But, you know, I'm willing, of course, to go with what everybody else wants to do.
Would any, would rest of the committee like to weigh in? You can just talk. I, you know, like unmute yourself and, and share freely at the, at the Zoom here.
I think given how much is on the agenda, we, and most people can't take a full day off.
No.
I think what um Dr. Krickhead is, is recommending is probably the most practical way to make it through the agenda.
Okay, great.
Things that are two to three hour stints.
Wonderful. Um, for the.
I would agree.
For the fourth then, what time would work for the, for the majority of you? I know, I know that Dr. Krickhead's schedule is very unexpectedly busy that day. But that's what happens when you're in charge, right? Um, but Dr. Carol, the, um, Member Rostini, Member White? I know Member Rosemarin is not here, but I'm fairly sure that she'll, um, Dr. Carol, I know you teach as well.
I'm, I'm flexible on the fourth. Um, I would, and I, and I agree, I see the benefit of splitting it into two conversations. I would just ask that we try to figure out how to do those like fairly close to one another so that.
Yes, I agree. I hundred percent.
If it's two nights in a row or two nights of the same week, then we could at least kind of keep the conversations together in our minds. I was.
I can ask Charlene Roach to send you all uh an email, just sort of with the dates in the neck, in the span of that week and the following, like, and just, and then we can figure it out that way um with Charlene, thereby uh keeping it simple that way. Does that sound like a, a good solution to you guys? Okay, great. All right. And, and um, so like maybe mid-afternoon on the fourth or, I don't know, um, Beverly, what your schedule is that day?
You know, the evening hours after five is best for me.
Okay, so then we can, we can do later in the afternoon. That's totally fine. Perfect. I will send a, I will send a note to Charlene and I will have her communicate to all of you. And then we will set the time for that day and then set a time for a day close in, in proximity on, to finish the, to work. It's important work and we have a lot of things to, to iron out. So that's the um agenda for August fourth. And then the last thing on the, um, on this chair's report is the school committee meeting calendar. So if you look at the calendar that Charlene um sent to us, you can see that she has outlined, it's a fairly general calendar. The dates that we're having the meetings and then what are the typical topics that we have at meetings throughout the year at different times of the year. One of the things that I would like to figure out at the retreat is what are some of the other things that we want to add to the calendar? We want to address and consider for the community. And then the other thing that I'd like for us to consider at the retreat is how do we want to have forums or, you know, conversations with the school committee around these really important issues to really support the community and feeling like that we are a part of, they are a part of the conversation with the school committee, given that that's not what the school committee meeting is about. So that's one of the things that I would like to add to the calendar when we have the retreat. So it, um, I, I, I think, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure if we have to, I think we're just voting right now. I think we're supposed to take, we'll vote on the draft calendar just for the dates and the topics that are here. We vote on this calendar multiple times throughout the year because we are changing what happens at each meeting. But for instance, at our August twenty-fifth meeting, um, we will have back-to-school updates right now. We will update the calendar um and we will talk about school handbooks. That's the typical thing that we do at our August meeting every year. So that's what this calendar is about. So I'm Dr. Krickhead.
Um, before we vote, has this calendar been checked against Jewish holidays in the fall, Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanah?
I, I, I had spoken to Charlene about that and she had a, a, a list of the holidays and when they were. So I'm fairly certain that it is, but it's always good to double check. And I, and I don't mind that we vote on it at the August twenty-fifth meeting. That's fine with me. I, I, I think that, I think that Charlene is the most thorough person um and just keeping me on task with the calendar.
It definitely has been checked and, and worked in concert with Rabbi Benjamin as well.
Okay, great.
Perfect. Okay. So then I, I can have a motion on the table to approve the draft school committee calendar of the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year with future amendments to follow.
So moved.
Okay, this will be a roll call vote. Dr. Krickhead?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Member Rostini?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
And Member Everhart? Yes, wonderful. Now Charlene will be, will be happy that I, that I finally took care of that from. All right. So we have a few more things left on our um agenda. We have a finance subcommittee report, which includes some vendor warrants, I believe, on Dr. Krickhead.
Yes, it only includes vendor warrants. Um, so I'm going to make an omnibus motion and then I'm going to make a single motion for a vendor warrant. So um, there are a lot of them. So uh, hold on tight. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve uh vendor warrant number forty-nine payable on June tenth in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. Vendor warrant number fifty-one payable on June twenty-fourth in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-two dollars, eight hundred seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-seven cents. Vendor warrant number fifty-three payable on July eighth in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents. Vendor warrant number fifty-four uh payable on July fifteenth in the amount of thirty-four thousand, four dollars and eighty-four cents. And those were all FY twenty-one, correct? Uh, Assistant Superintendent Dexter, yes. And a new um category for FY twenty-two, a vendor warrant number three payable on July fifteenth in the paltry amount of four thousand dollars, although it's not paltry to me. Okay, so uh, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Member White. Um, all in, I have to do a roll call vote, Margaret? Is that the deal? Okay. Chair Everhart?
Yes.
Uh, Member White?
Yes.
Member Rostini?
Yes.
Uh, Member Carol?
Yes.
Okay, so that's five zero uh for that one. Thank you very much. And um finally, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve vendor warrant number fifty-two payable on July first in the amount of four hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. Um, Member Carol?
Yes.
Member Rostini?
Yes.
Uh, Member Everhart?
Yes.
And Member White?
Epstein?
Okay, so that's, oh, and me, uh, yes. Um, so that's four, zero, one. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, um, Dr. Krickhead. Appreciate that. The next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes. I believe it's from our July sixth, two thousand twenty-one meeting. I believe you all received them from um Charlene. And um, have you had a chance to look them over? Okay, so are the motion on the table, and if there's any corrections, we can make them after I make the motion. So the motion on the table is to approve the minutes of our July sixth, two thousand twenty-one meeting. So, okay, all right. Are there any comments, questions or corrections for the minutes? Oh, yes, um, Superintendent Dexter, Assistant Superintendent Dexter.
Um, did you mean July sixteen?
Oh, sixteenth. I'm so sorry. Yes, July sixteen. Thank you. I don't know why I said July sixth. I said my tired self. Sorry. Okay, so the motion on the table is to approve the minutes of our July sixteenth meeting, two thousand twenty-one. I have a second? Yes? All right, Dr. Krickhead. Okay, now are there any questions about or comments or changes? All right, so we'll do a roll call vote. Member White?
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Krickhead?
Yes.
Member Rostini?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
And Member Everhart? Yes. Okay. Sorry. Thank you, Doc. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent. Okay. Um, we will have minutes to, oh, yes, Assistant Superintendent Dexter.
I'm, I'm really sorry. I'm looking at the summary and it says July, but I think.
Wait, wait, wait. Let me go back. Hold on.
It's June. It's June sixteen.
Oh, my goodness. It's, you're right. Okay, okay. All right. June sixteen. Okay. All right. You know, it is now nine twenty-six. I was in the sun with many four-year-olds today. I am very sorry. I am really tired. So, all right. So let's, let's take serious though, because this is serious business. So I apologize for, for my lack of understanding. Let me just grab the minutes right in front of me. I'm pulling them up on my computer right now.
All right, can I ask a question while you're doing that?
You absolutely may ask a question.
Okay, so I missed the first hour of that meeting because I was at Denham. And usually in previous minutes, I've noticed that it says, you know, that I wasn't there and then it says, you know, Ms. White arrived at such and such a time and there's no, there's nothing in the minutes that indicate that I missed the first hour of the.
Right, so that, so that, thank you for reminding of us that because we need to note that in the minutes.
Yeah.
Yes, we need to note that in the minutes. Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that up, Member White. Okay. So, um, all right. So I will make a motion to approve the minutes of June sixteen, two thousand twenty-one, um, with the amendment to add the time that Member White um joined us for the meeting.
Okay.
Okay? And then I'll make sure that that happens. All right. So is there a second to that?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the last time that we're going to vote on the minutes from June sixteen, two thousand twenty-one. Member White?
Yes.
Okay, Member Rostini?
Yes.
Dr. Krickhead?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
And Margaret Everhart? Yes. All right. Thank you for your patience, guys. Sorry. All right. Our last item before we adjourn to executive session is next meeting agenda items. Is there anything, okay, so on our next meeting agenda, you notice that we are going to discuss back-to-school plans. Um, we are going to look at the handbooks, which you will receive prior to the meeting. Um, and we will also um probably amend our school committee calendar after our retreat. Is there any other topics that anyone would like to add to that meeting at this moment? You can always, you know, let us know later.
Well, we will have um had a meeting of the policy subcommittee.
Great.
At that time, um, in the second week of August, I believe.
Right. Perfect.
Which will be posted, but we'll give an update there.
Okay. And then, um, Dr. Krickhead, do you, um, will you want to be giving, will you want to give a finance subcommittee update at that meeting?
You're on.
I will at least have vendor warrants to approve, so we need finance.
Okay, finance.
We always need finance for that reason.
Okay, wonderful.
And I believe the school building committee will have a, a report for that meeting as well.
Cool. Building committee. So I will forward those things to um Charlene to add to our to our agenda for the next meeting. Okay. Well, I want to thank you all tonight for your participation in this meeting and for your thoughtful questions and for, and for, and to Dr. Spalding and Superintendent Jet and Assistant Superintendent Dexter for the work they've been, ongoing work they're doing on the many issues that are, that we are working on in the district, particularly around equity and inclusion and diversity. I know it's a com, it's a com, a complicated conversation, but as I said before, I'm very hopeful for the district. We, we live in a wonderful town. Um, and we have wonderful, wonderful families and terrific students and excellent educators and support staff. And I know that we're going to move forward in a positive way. and support staff. And I know that we're going to move forward in a positive direction. I have full confidence, um, in our town. So I'm going to make a motion to adjourn to a executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union and non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with union and non-union personnel in accordance with chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A two. We will, we will adjourn from the executive session not to return to open session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Member White, this is a roll call vote. I'm Dr. Carol.
Yes. Can I just ask one quick question, though?
Of course.
I don't know if it will close right after this. Shane, I think that some people have submitted questions that we aren't able to respond to in the meeting.
Okay.
Can we make sure we're saving that? So that we can review it later?
Hmm, that's a great question. Um, I don't know.
Forty-three of them.
I don't know if Shane is still here.
No, I'm, I'm still here. It's just forty-three questions are currently up. To my knowledge, I'm not aware of any settings that would allow me to save all questions as they are now. What, what I could say is I couldn't host, uh, say, Ms. Dexter before I leave so that you can have an executive session and perhaps take a mental note or a, a picture on your phone of the questions and go through them that way.
Yeah, or someone can, uh, yeah, so this is what we'll do. How about we do this?
I just copied and paste them and we have them.
Oh, Mr. Jet, technology. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, Dr. Carol, thank you for pointing that out. I don't pay, I'm, I'm focused on like the meeting and I'm not paying attention to, um, that, that part of the meeting. Okay, so I had a second. This is a roll call vote. Dr. Carol? Yes, Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
And Member Everhart? Yes. Again, thank you, everyone, for attending tonight and the community for attending, and we'll see you all soon. Be safe.